My name is Wayne Franson, Chairman of the Planning Commission Meeting. Our Planning Commission. We will, all of our, several of our members are remote tonight. John Wallace is remote and Larry Henry is remote, but zoomed into the meeting. Present is Severin Johnson, Lori Thomas, and Ted Mickelson and myself. So we will first go ahead and start with our public hearing. It is two minutes after seven. We have four items for, on our public hearing agenda. First item was, consider a change to several of our ordinances. One is to allow a change for the alternate planning commissioner to vote when that planning commissioner was forming part of the five regular members. Right now, the ordinance only allows the alternate to vote when he is filling in to establish a quorum. So this would allow a greater opportunity for voting from the alternate, just so that all know, the alternate can participate in any of the discussions that we have. But they get, they, they can't vote unless, right now unless they're filling a quorum or what we're proposing, that if one of us is absent, then the alternate can participate and vote. The other item for consideration is changing city code 10-1-4B and 10-11-2CG, having to do with CCNRs. There is an implied, there are implied references in our city code that we enforce CCNRs when we do not. So those changes would make adjustment to our city ordinances to clarify that we do not have anything to do with HOA, CCNRs, in, in our review process for site plans or other issues. That those are between the builder and neighbor or the HOA as the case may be. The other item for consideration is a proposed ordinance having to do with accessory dwelling units. This requires an ordinance change because up to now, we have not allowed those, but a change in the state statute now requires cities to make allowance for accessory dwelling units, which we are doing by the proposed ordinance. And the last item for public hearing is a change in our fencing ordinance for, in R119 zones. And primarily, right now, that pertains to Four Seasons. And they've asked us to give consideration to that since the lots there are of a different makeup and character as the lots in the rest of the, of the city. They're a little, they're closer, they don't have trees to separate them and some other things. So those were placed out for public comment or for our public viewing and we'll take public comment tonight on any who choose to, to make it. At this point, we won't limit time for those who wish to comment on any or all of those items. So with that in mind, we will first turn to any of those signed in to our, to the meeting. And it looks like we only have Ben Brindley, who is not part of the commission. So Ben, do you have any comments that you would like to make on any of those areas?
No, I don't. I was going to ask, I've, I've got a little bit of a conflict. I was going to see if there was anything that you thought that might impact us, that I should hang on the meeting tonight. If not, I might just hop off. I couldn't see anything specifically for us, so.
No, none in the, the one issue is maybe CCNRs, for you to get an understanding of where the city's coming from in those, but that's, that's the only thing. But we won't, we won't discuss those here in this meeting. We'll have, we'll discuss those in our business part, but I can, if you're not able to attend that, I'll be glad to get with you and, and share what, what our discussion was on that, if you'd like.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Sure. Jody, do you see any others that, do we have any present, any who would wish to make comments on any of those items that we are part of our public hearing tonight? Okay, if you'd come to that chair and turn the microphone on, there's a green button on it, just turn it on and go ahead and, and speak.
I'm Carrie Pelfrey, and on the fencing ordinance down in the Four Seasons.
Yes.
My parents are buying property, are building there. And because of the way the neighborhoods are put together and how closely they are, I feel like that would be an area for an exception to the fencing. If, if maybe there was some guidelines on what type of fencing would be helpful so that you didn't end up with a chain link or some type of wire fencing that would decrease the value in the way the homes look, but would provide them with that added privacy that they don't have because all of the trees were taken down.
Very well. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Very well, there being no other comments, time is nine minutes after seven, we will conclude the public hearing and move into our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting tonight. Yes.
Wayne, should we may comment, there were a couple of...
I'm sorry, yes, thanks for reminding me. We have received one letter that they requested to be read, the person did, but it's over our, our normal allotted time of two minutes, so we won't read it, but we will, we'll file it with our public hearing tonight. It'll be part of the documentation that we have for that, for the public hearing. So, and there are some questions that were asked there that I think we'll be covering as we discuss that tonight. So thanks for the reminder, Severin. All right. Ted, would you lead us in a pledge? And Lori, would you offer invocation for us after that? If you folks would like to join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we come before thee at the start of this Planning Commission meeting and ask for thy help that we will be able to clearly think of all the issues, that we will be able to make good decisions for the city, and that we will be able to serve the residents well. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in such a beautiful community and ask thee to please bless us and its citizens and please protect us and bless us that we will be able to unify and be happy and involved in our community. And we say this in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Lori. Let me comment a little bit about public hearings for our planning commissioners and public who may be listening. Our city code for electronic meetings requires public comment to be had, to be given here or at the, what they call an anchor point of that meeting. We've given some leniency in the past because of COVID, et cetera, to allow people who are signed into the meeting to make public comment. But as, as time passes here and there's less of an issue with COVID, I think we're going to put that into effect. And any, as long as the meeting, as long as we're open here for a meeting, that we'll only allow public comment here in the city center. People can zoom in to hear the meeting, they want, as long as the city continues to do that. But if they want to make a public comment, they'll need to come here to do that. So on future public hearing meetings, we'll put that into the notice so that people reading that then will be familiar and know that if they want to make public comment, they'll need to come here to do that. So.
Wayne?
Yes?
Question, so do you want me physically coming down after this one?
No, this is for public hearing. So we do have a point in time for, for public comment if people wanted to make about anything, but that will be here too. But for, for you and anybody else who may be out of town, who wants to zoom into our meeting that are part of our commission, you can continue to do that and have dialogue with us from, from your home or wherever you're at.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if you ever need me there for a vote, if you know you're going to be short, let me know and I'll physically come down.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm happy just to do this as an alternate, so.
Okay, very good. Thanks, John. So first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the September 21 meeting. Sent those out, didn't get any contrary feedback on those, so I'd entertain a motion for, on those minutes, if somebody wants to make it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 15.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there a second? All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Marcus Arthur? Okay, very good, thank you. That aye was for approval, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Let's go in then on the items that were part of our public hearing. Item number two on the agenda is to allow the planning commissioner alternate to vote when he's filling the role of somebody who's absent. We're, I'm open to discussion or comments or, that pertains to you, John, primarily, so you're welcome to chime in if you want.
I just felt like that the alternate really didn't have a formal role to play until the commission shrunk by three members. And when that would ever happen, I don't know. It's never happened all the time that I've been on the planning commission. So I felt like as long as we dropped below five planning commission members, that we ought to let the alternate come in to vote at that time. I didn't see any reason for us to wait until it shrunk down to below three.
No, okay, thank you. It's a good idea, something that I, we've kind of missed or overlooked in the past. There's no reason not to, so I think it's a good idea, Severin. Any other comments that...
No, I think I'm, given our current alternate, do we need to send his name to the NSA to get some background checks and stuff done before, before we allow him to vote? But I support it as well.
I don't know, we may end up with him not on the commission.
Now, John is always logged into the meetings. In the future, if we have another alternate, will they be required to log in all the time?
We're only allowed one alternate.
Okay.
So that's, the same would apply if, for some reason, one of, one of the commissioners drop off and we, so there'll only be one alternate. We'll have to fill a position with a permanent position, whether it's with John or, or me.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, I think it's okay if they vote, if, if they're always in the meetings and aware of what's going on, if they're not attending because they're an alternate and then just occasionally vote, I don't think that would be good.
As long as we have the public zooming in, I'm comfortable with that. But if we reach a point in time where we don't have this Zoom anymore, then we'd want the alternate to be here on an on, on an ongoing basis.
And I assume he gets all the information we get emailed to him, so I think, look to Lori's point, as long as he's up to speed on what we're voting on, I think that's certainly...
Yep.
I mean, I think, she's saying if someone's completely not involved, they're an alternate but never involved, and then they show up and we can vote on stuff they've never... Oh, is that all it takes?
Yeah. If there's anything John doesn't know about, it's my oversight. I try to feed him with everything that all of us have. So, okay. And this will...
Do you want to take a motion?
Take a motion.
I move that we change 10-6A-1 to allow the, the alternate planning commission member to vote whenever we drop below five on the planning commission.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Larry?
Larry, second.
Very well, will, all in favor of that motion? Aye. Any opposed? We will forward that then to the, to the city council then for their review and, and approval, since it's a change to our ordinance. The next item, repeal of two parts of our city code, 10-1-4B and 10-11-2CG. These are the parts that have to do with the CCNRs. So let's talk about those for just a bit. The 10-1-4B states this, "Whenever the regulations of this zoning title impose higher standards than are required in any other ordinance or regulation, private deed restriction or private covenant, these regulations shall govern. But if the requirements of the other ordinance, regulation or private covenant are the more restrictive, then those requirements shall govern." So what we're considering then is a strikeout of part of that. So the new, proposed new ordinance would read, "Whenever the regulations of this zoning title impose higher standards than are required in any other ordinance or regulation, these regulations shall govern." So that's, that would be the change to 10-1-4B. The other amendment to 10-6A-1A, it currently reads, oh no, I'm sorry, that's the one we just approved, yeah, with, with John.
10-11-2CG.
Yep, okay. So I cracked, so the other one, 10...
No, that's the one. 10-11-2C.
No, I have, okay. It, no, says, "No part or portion of this chapter shall supersede any more restrictive HO rule, HOA rules or CCNRs." That would be repealed in, in total. So let's talk a little bit about CCNRs. CCNRs are established by, can be established by homeowners associations. We have two active homeowners associations in our city now, one in Four Seasons and one in Summit Creek. But we have a number of subdivisions that no longer have HOAs associated with them. People have moved, committees have not been reestablished. In the, one known as the Woodland Hills Property Owners Association, which was, I believe, the first one established here in the city, in 2014, the organization of the HOA and related committees were abolished by a vote of the members of that, known as WOPA. But left in place were the CCNRs for that organization, leaving it up to neighbors or other people, part of that association, to bring complaints against their neighbors if they wanted to do that. There was no organization in place to do that. So the CCNRs stayed in place, we have those, but the organization to enforce those was done away with by a vote of the people. And that document was filed with the county to abolish, to abolish that. Thousand Oaks, several of the plats there have CCNRs, but there's no organization that's in place to enforce them. There could be if they wanted. If, if the people, all the people got together and decided by a vote to establish organizations, they could. But presently, there are none. And whatever of those CCNRs, some of them are different from one plat to another, they're not consistent, but they're in place and one neighbor can bring, can bring action against another neighbor if they choose to do that. Now their action they take is in district court, that's their enforcement mechanism. They can try to get voluntary compliance from a neighbor if a neighbor is violating a CCNR, but the only enforcement aspect they have is through the district court.
So if they have a complaint, they don't come to the city office or to the sheriff or we have nothing to do with it?
If it's in violation of a CCR, right? Because the sheriff would be, I mean.
Okay.
And they will, they wouldn't enforce them either.
Yeah, sure, that'd be a different issue probably, if you're going to a sheriff.
District court.
Okay.
And we had, we have that with the one case here in the city where there was no HOA, but a neighbor took exception with another neighbor and took them to court over it, having to do with a setback. So the way that we treat CCNRs presently is, basically we have nothing to do with them. When we leave that up to the HOA to monitor however they want with their homes, with their lots, for example, if there was, doesn't have to be a home necessarily, if there was a CCNR that required some degree of lot clearance, a neighbor who didn't clear their lot or didn't take out dead trees, they could file a complaint against their neighbor who's not doing that. So, but most of it has to do with, with building issues. So we're, we leave that up to the HOA to govern that. And the two that I know of, they have a requirement that whatever building plans that a lot owner might have, has to present those plans to a committee or to the HOA for approval before they give them to the city. Now, we, we presently don't ask if they've done that. Again, we, we don't enforce those, we don't have anything, anything to do with them. So if somebody comes to us with building plans, we don't say, "Have you checked with your HOA first?" Because we're not going to look at them. No, it's, it's up to them to put in place whatever they want to do to enforce those, those CCNRs in their, in their HOA. We, and that's, we don't treat one HOA different from another, that's, that's what we do if, if it comes up. Now, if somebody asks us, "Does that area have CCNRs?", we'll tell them, "Yes, you need to talk to the HOA to find out the details about that." Now, there's currently a part of the subdivision process that requires the developer to give us a copy of their proposed CCNRs. We're trying to decide whether we want to continue that process, but the purpose that we get those for is to make sure that they're, they're not, that they're not telling the people they can do something that our ordinance prohibits. So, and that's the only function. At the beginning of the subdivision process, we require that. So they may make changes later on and we, we never see those changes, we don't approve those changes, we don't do anything with those changes. So that's, again, up to them to, to monitor and, and control that. So, do you all have any questions about the CCNRs? Now, a group of lot owners who are bound by CCNRs, they can vote to cancel them all if they want to do that, once control is turned over to them as a lot owner. And what most subdividers, they will do that. Once, once they get a sufficient number of homes or have a complete build out, they will turn that, well, most of the time the developer doesn't live there anymore, or live there, and so they will turn that, they will form a committee and that committee then will be the, will be the guide. But if all the homeowners get together and say, "We don't want these anymore," they can, they can do away with them. City, again, has nothing to do with it, that's up to them and how they want to, how they want to do that. So, let me see if I covered some of the questions that were asked here.
Wayne, I have a question on that. Didn't the state pass some legislation this past spring regarding cities' involvement in this and trying to minimize it?
That I don't know, John.
What, what you're doing heads the direction of what the legislature's been trying to do, I just don't know what they passed this spring that would impact that.
Thank you. Would you mind doing some research on that and see what you can find out, if there was anything done?
Yeah, I know Carrie was tracking that pretty close, but I'll reach out to her and see what I can find.
If somebody comes to the city with building plans and, well, for example, Summit Creek, they don't, right now, allow accessory apartments in homes that they have there. Now, they may, they may change because of the state statute that was passed, having to do with accessory dwelling units, but I use that as an example. If somebody came to us with plans from Summit Creek and they had an accessory dwelling unit, I don't care, that's, that's up to Summit Creek to monitor. So we would go ahead and approve, because there's not, it's not, if, if it were not in, if it were in compliance with the city ordinance, we're fine with it, as of approving that. So, okay, moving on. So, let's read three, yeah, need a motion on, on three.
So, let's maybe recap what this is doing with the word changes. Basically, it's taking the city's involvement out of anything to do with it, right?
Correct.
So we're just going to strike and the city has no involvement with CCNR?
Correct.
Enforcement.
We don't read, yeah.
Review it, no enforcement.
Yeah. And we're taking away if the, if the CCNR happens to be more strict, we don't care.
Right.
It's the ordinance, our city ordinance that will...
And that's what we're changing, before, before, to put it in layman's terms, before the way it read was that whichever was more restrictive, basically, the CCNR of the city governed. Now we're just saying we have nothing to do with CCNRs.
Correct. Yep.
So.
I have a question.
Yes.
So in, in 10-1-4B... So in, in 10-1-4B, you said you would strike out part of it. And it said, "But if the requirements of other ordinance regulation..." No, wait.
I think I know what you're getting at. This is in the zoning ordinance. So if there's another ordinance that the city has that potentially addresses the same thing, then whichever
Is more restrictive.
Is more restrictive would apply in our own ordinances.
Okay.
Did I get?
Yes, exactly. Yes. I was wondering what other would come into play.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
Wayne, do my understanding is correct that, that we will still allow CCNRs or homeowners association to be more restrictive, but they still cannot be less restrictive?
No, they can be whatever they want. And we don't care.
But if the city code is more restrictive.
That's what we're reviewing too.
That's what we'll do.
That's right. We're, we're focused on city code, whatever the city code is.
We basically ignore the CCRs, period, whether they're more restrictive or less restrictive.
Exactly.
We just ignore them.
Yep.
But, but if they're more, if they're less restrictive, then it won't follow city, city ordinances?
It will. They'll be bound by the more restrictive city ordinance.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay, okay. So any other questions or comments about that? Okay, I take a motion on what we're proposing with the strikeouts and with those two ordinances.
Why are you looking at me? Okay.
You look like you're getting ready to come up with some wording there. I was waiting for it to come up with some wording.
Do I need to say the exact strikeout part that you're taking out?
Well, you can, or as I read, as they were read.
Okay, okay. I would like to make a movement that we repeal city code 10-1-4B using the strikeout as previously mentioned.
Okay.
And also repeal city code 10-11-2CG. Is that it?
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, Lori motion. Severin second. Any further discussion?
I'll just add, Wayne, that I, I've been on an HOA board before where we've had CCNRs. And that's commonly how it was done. This was in West Jordan. They had nothing to do with enforcing CCNRs or reviewing any building permits. So I think it's, it was up to the HOA board to enforce whatever CCNRs there were. Now, we had certain requirements when, because like, if, if, if I'm wrong, when a, when a, someone builds a home, it's, it's the responsibility of the realtor to in, inform the home buyer that there is an HOA that they're moving into. It has to be disclosed, right? So then it's up to them to take on the diligence of searching out CCNRs and what they need to do. And then as a board, we always, you know, met with whoever was moving in and made sure they were aware of our CCNRs. But the city had nothing to do with it. So I think this is the right track.
To give you a personal example, when I, when we bought our lot up here, the realtor gave us a copy of the CCNRs that allegedly applied to the lot that we purchased. Except they didn't. They gave us the CCNRs for a different plot in Thousand Oaks. And you look at the two CCNRs and they are different. One is more restrictive than the other one. In fact, the one where I live was more restrictive than the one they gave to me.
These, a CCNR is filed with each, with the county on each lot. So really it's up to somebody who's buying that, usually if they go through a title company. That's part of the due diligence. The title company searches that out and provides then the buyer a copy of those CCNRs. So I'm a member of a HOA up in the mountains. And we have, the only thing we have that governs us besides state law or county is the CCNRs. So we use them pretty effectively because that's the only thing that we have to, to govern our association by.
And they're, just FYI, there are 80 subdivisions in the Woodland Hills Property Owners Association area. 80 subdivisions. Now that doesn't mean there are any different CCNRs because some of those subdivisions are two or three lots. But there are other subdivisions like Flint Ridge. I remember that we reviewed the Flint Ridge subdivision CCNRs at one time. You see, there, if there was something in there that we ought to incorporate into our code. And I don't know how many other of those 80 subdivisions have, have CCNRs. Each of the.
They're, they're all under WHOPA. So there may be two of them that, there may be two groups of CCNRs if that's the case. Because they are all under the WHOPA CCNRs, but there may be a secondary.
Well, just like Thousand Oaks.
Yes, yeah.
There, there are six plots. And each one of those plots has CCNRs. I don't know whether they're all different. I know that two of them are different. Because I've seen those two. Whether or not others are different, I, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, and you, D and C are different. I think it's D and C.
I think I had A and C.
No, because, yeah, because we looked at C and D and really we were specifically looking at.
You're F or G.
Or D.
You're E.
D. Or Thousand Oaks, but D, yeah. Yeah, and there was a bigger, there was a larger main floor square footage requirement, D than C or B, wanted to admit anyway.
And the state is restricting more and more what the cities can require by way of information for building permit. For example, cities can no longer dictate the outside appearance of a structure, of the kind of material that would be on the outside. We can't restrict that anymore. So those kinds of things are, a, a homeowner association can, but the city cannot by its ordinance.
Just as an example, the two CCNRs that I had access to, one of them had on the exterior says 75% of the exterior surfaces have to be stuccled, wrecked, or stolen. The other one says 100% of the exterior surfaces had to be stuccled, wrecked, or stolen.
Yep. So cities are being more limited, more and more limited. Okay, moving on to the next item four.
I don't think we took a vote on that.
Oh, didn't we? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we have, that's right. I asked for more comment. I got it.
And then I got us distracted, sorry.
Okay, Lori made a motion. Severin seconded it to do away with those references and strikeouts that we mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, next item number four, the ADU. Accessory dwelling unit. What you have in your package was, is a, is an application. And this is tailored after the city of Salem. Salem passed this ordinance last year. So I went and looked at their ordinance and their application. And so this is largely a copy of what they did. So it's an application process that a homeowner has to complete to, in order to have a accessory apartment in their home. And generally there'll be changes that will have to be made to the home to comply with code. For example, if they want to take a room downstairs and make it into a bedroom that wasn't, oftentimes there's no windows in that room. And they will, will be required then to put a window in there. They're required to have a separate entrance, a separate outside entrance. And things of that nature that would require city inspection to certify that they're okay to be able to have an accessory apartment.
Now, is this different from, say I had somebody come just live in one of the bedrooms and, you know, that one of my kids used to be in and is that different? Like a roommate or something?
Yeah.
Say I'm renting a bedroom.
They can't do that.
You can't do that.
It's against the city ordinance to do that at this point in time.
It has to be an accessory dwelling unit and meet these requirements even though
Correct.
I used to have one person in there. Now there's a different one.
Yeah. So. It's been that way for years. We know that it's not complied with.
If you're not charging rent, you're fine. Or if you have like a relative come stay with you in a bedroom or something.
You're okay. But if you're, if you're renting a part of your house out like that, then
That's not.
You can't do that.
I'm not, by the way, but.
Some are.
Have Corbin stop by your house tomorrow?
Set up surveillance. So the ordinance is drafted, is, is not a lot of detail in there. And that's probably okay, but that's what Salem, Salem has. There's one thing that I added to Salem's ordinance is a requirement for an additional water share.
Oh.
Now, there is a question and we want to talk about it. What I put in there was .90 acre feet, the same as a normal house would be. But on reflection of that, I think that's excessive.
Because usually that includes outdoor water.
Correct.
Which they're not.
They're not going to have. So I would think .45 acre feet, half that. And that's, that's kind of the reason that years ago the city changed their requirement from, was .45 acre feet to .90 was because of the outside watering. And they've determined that through some, I mean, any city has, they, they've, through some analysis, that about half the water used is outside watering.
It's a lot more than that.
Is it? Okay, you would know.
.4, .45, the state has.
Yeah, that's.
It seems like.
The state has guidelines of how much you have to require on your outdoor water, depending on zones you live in and stuff like that in the state.
Yeah, and some cities have zoned for that, for that. Different zones in the city have a different water requirement. We don't. Ours is across the board.
Okay, so usually you use about 1,000 to 2,000 gallons per month per person for indoor usage. And then in the summer, when you start watering outside, you use about 20 times that. It goes up so much.
Is that right?
Yes. The outdoor watering is huge. Indoor is not very much.
And there is a little bit different between water use and water right.
Yeah.
Right, so. So you're, you're, I think you're, you're talking about.
I'm talking huge.
It's probably huge, but water rights that they got to bring.
Yeah.
And we're talking acre feet is a, is a different number. But the question I would have is, so say like if you're required to bring .45 acre feet, additional water right, which is usually brought by the developer when they develop the properties.
Correct.
Right? So now you're an individual homeowner. I don't know how they would get that water right.
They would have to do it just like the developer does.
Which is usually.
On the open market.
Yeah, which is usually they are trading some sort of irrigation shares for the property they have. I guess you just have to try and find an irrigation company that's selling water shares or something and.
True, or someone else has got a well. Maybe they've got excess water. But most often it does come from, from.
But you have to be.
Irrigation water source, Utah County, Utah Lake or Jordan River.
Yeah, because it has to be something within the basin, right? You can't.
Now, it can actually be up Salt Lake area too, because the, our water here goes up into Great Salt Lake.
Right.
So, but it could be something that they can bring that can be transferred down here.
But you have to have something that can be either transferred to the basin or is in the basin. Because different water, like you can't go to St. George and buy something right here. Because that's a different water basin, basically.
Exactly. So my suggestion would be is that we require that as part of the process. A .45 acre feet of water. It's, it, it, it's going to add to their water usage of that home. They likely will not get a separate bill because it's a single water meter. So it won't be a, they'll be paying the homeowner for whatever he feels is part of the, the water that they're using, however he factors that in. But it's not something that will be separately metered.
I would suggest that we don't do that because I think that if you have an, I, I don't think that the in-home use will be considerably more. And it may even mean that you have less outdoor water use. If you're taking up a space for an accessory building, that area won't be irrigated. That's where we use a lot of water.
But in the city planning, the way, so when you're planning the water systems, the way we look at it is equivalent, equivalent residential connections or units, ERUs or ERCs is what they call them. So I'm just trying, I'm just thinking out loud here. So even though they're, they're, say, moving into an accessory building or versus another lot, so their outdoor water use is not going to increase. You still have the other lot that has been going to use that water. They're increasing the water use from what was planned. Because now they've basically doubled the indoor use at that area. Even though they're not taking up another lot, that lot's still going to get used somewhere. You, you know what I mean? So when we're, when you're planning water systems, you're assuming the city's going to get built out. And you're looking at population growth and converting that to ERUs. So now you've taken basically an ERUs equivalent to one household, which is about 3.4 people in a house in Utah. Now you're saying you got seven people in that house. Where I agree, you'll increase that indoor use, which, which is not only going to increase the city's requirement for water rates, but also the need for water source. If, I mean, I don't think in this city it's going to be that big a deal because we're not going to have enough that's going to go beyond our capacity. I don't believe it. But other cities, they could be dealing with, you know, now we need more water source. To get more water source, they have to have the water rights.
Right.
To do that.
I, I think I, I'm concerned as Lori is. That as I look at where we might have these units built, it's likely going to be, it's going to be in a single family home that now is probably occupied by empty nesters. So all the kids are moved away. They've got excess space. And so they want to convert their basement into an accessory dwelling unit. And so when that water right was given in the beginning, it was as if that was, that house was fully full, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight people. And now you've got an empty nester couple and maybe another family in, in the accessory dwelling unit. So I don't know that it's really going to add to the water requirements of the city than what that house was providing before it became an empty nester house.
And I think on individual cases, that would be, could be true. But when you're planning water systems for source distribution, you're looking on average. So that empty nester may have lost four kids, but the people up the street may have now had four kids. You know what I mean? So you're trying to average, so you don't look at individual houses when you're planning water systems. You just say equivalent, this is what a typical household uses in this community. And then you, so you're averaging it through the community. And so on individual cases, that would be true, but on average is, is what you're looking at. So, or one may be subtracting, one's adding, but you're figuring out the average of that. So your water demand, if now your average has gone from three and a half per household to, to five per household, now your demand goes up.
I, I know that in the city now, we're not using the .90 acre feet per home.
Right.
We're, we're under that.
I can tell you.
By a bit.
Okay, when, when we built our house many, many years ago, I think the size of our septic tank had to do with the number of bedrooms in the home.
I think you're right.
And I'm thinking now, you have a house, maybe it had six bedrooms and you're converting something to an accessory dwelling unit. I think if you don't increase the number of bedrooms, I think if you don't increase the number of bedrooms, maybe we can stick with the water rights that you originally had. But if I'm adding something on, then I should have to buy more water rights.
Yeah. When you.
Yeah.
Be able to refresh my memory, but I think we also added.
Severin, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
Thanks. Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I will get closer to the mic. Um, I think that, uh, now you've lost my train. Oh, I think in here somewhere we also had a provision for putting a, an accessory building, a dwelling unit over a garage. Wasn't that in there?
Yes.
So that would be the separate building that Laurie had kind of mentioned before.
And we're allowing a separate building altogether. Doesn't have to be over garage. But it can be another building as, as long as it meets the setbacks on the same lot.
And in that situation, then I would agree that maybe there ought to be a provision to add a point four, five acre feet. If you're adding bedrooms or if you're adding another dwelling unit.
But in the end.
Another.
Uh, an external.
Separate.
External.
External dwelling unit. I would agree with that. But if, as Laurie said, if you're just the original house and you're just subdividing it, so to speak, to have an accessory dwelling unit in that original house, then I don't think we ought to require the additional four and a half shares of water rights. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Of course, of course, another issue too is just not the number of bedrooms. If you're going to have an accessory apartment, you're also going to probably want to make sure that they have a separate bathroom facility and/or a separate kitchen facility, which would change the water usage in that area.
And I think they're required that also if they're renting a facility like that in their basement. And I, I can't.
Well, you couldn't just rent a room.
Not just a room, correct.
And, and, and the taxing part is going to be on the city, right? Because you're, whether you're not adding or not adding a room, you're still adding people. And that's really what water use comes down to.
Yes.
Is, is the number of people. Um, so I'm, I'm a because if, if, if you're adding the number of people, water demand goes up. Then what happens is it shortens the period until the city needs to go find more water rights to get more water source to feed the more people. So they're going to need those rights to do that. And so I'm not really hung up with that. I'm just wondering how, I'm, I'm more curious about how the people are going to get that water right. I think that's going to be the difficult thing. Especially in this day and age right now where water rights are eight thousand dollars a share and.
Well.
And they're hard to find, if you can find them.
Something to that, but still, there's no requirement that they have an accessory dwelling in it either. So they're going to have to make some modifications. It's going to be money out of their pocket to make changes to their home to accommodate that. And potentially one of those changes is acquire a water right or part of a water right.
Yet.
Next.
I mean, the way the state seems to be going.
Oh, I see.
Although in term housing, they may start requiring new construction to have ADUs.
Could be.
I mean, they'll probably need criteria for size, so on and so forth.
So right now.
Five thousand square feet, you have to have an accessory dwelling.
Right now, our use is point eight eight three acre feet per ERC. So we're almost point nine now. And that's because we've been adding like the church down there. I mean, those count for multiple ERCs.
It seemed like it was close to eighty, point eight five.
Yeah, it's point eighty three and we've got enough for.
Now, the, the problem that a city potentially runs into is if we, if we start using, we can't, we can't use more water than the state allows us to use. There's a fixed amount there. When do we reach that? They don't care before we reach that. But once we reach that, then as the water right is the key, not from the state.
The usage then, so we don't build up a credit for losing less than our nine acre feet.
Correct, we don't. But once we run out of water right, then it's going to be up to the city to pay for more water right. We can't, we don't go back to the citizens and say, well.
I think we could.
It's, well, it weighs the water rate, uh, but.
The city is a citizen.
Yeah, uh, but it's a challenge to go, and we're looking, I don't know. Ted, you know what an acre foot of water is going for? My understanding is it's between four and forty five hundred dollars.
Yeah, uh, so it probably depends on what market you're in, but I've heard as high as now eight thousand, but so it could be up to, six is pretty average of what I'm hearing right now. And it can be as low as four and as high as eight, just kind of depending, but.
But there are brokers out there who sell water rights also. But they are kind of, all of the, the, the problem is all of the water rights in Utah County have been allocated.
All state is over allocated, actually.
So if somebody wants a water right, they have to find somebody who's got one.
Yeah, state won't give them out anymore.
Can't, can't create it or buy it from the state.
So an individual property owners probably would cost them between two and four thousand dollars to get that four, point four, five acre feet. Maybe a little bit less.
Maybe just to give you some perspective on this, we've got enough water rights in the city at the population growth is projected to get us by till about twenty fifty. But what happens is you start, as you start adding more people, now instead of needing more water rights by twenty fifty, now maybe need it by twenty forty, thirty, whatever, you know.
Yeah, more people put swimming pools in.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know, so. But it's a ways out. City's good for a while, but anyway, we need to plan for the future too.
Yeah.
So.
So by twenty fifty, the city will be fully populated, you mean, or? When, when is the city anticipating having all of the lot built up?
Is that the projection? Two thousand fifty?
No, it's, it's a little longer than that, but, uh, let me see. So we, when we do these studies, we do it based on the population growth in the area. So what the city's traditionally grown at. But you could have a boom and you could, you could decrease that time by twenty years. So, so we have to use projections and that's kind of what we use on how the city has been growing. And, um, and then we also look the governors off, well, it's, it's actually, uh, the institute, the Ken Garner Institute that does it now, population projections, but we just look at a certain period. So we look up to twenty sixty. And by twenty sixty, we could have in the neighborhood of eight hundred ERCs, which is basically a home, an ERC is a home. Or what, four hundred and, almost fifty now, homes. So we're looking at doubling by twenty sixty-ish, twenty seventy, something like that.
Forty years.
And that's also making some assumptions on how the community would develop and divide lots and, you know, if those lots are available the way it's divided.
Okay. Any other? Thoughts? Yes, John?
I think it's fair to make them acquire some additional water right in some form or fashion if they're increasing the size of a home or adding a, a separate edifice. Um, you know, the reasons you guys already mentioned, I, I think it's something that needs to be looked at realistically. Um, Laurie's right. I mean, you know, family size ebbs and flows. You move in with kids, the kids married, leave. You know, adjustments made, but like Ted said, in, in the construction industry, we don't monitor that in that much detail. But if you're going to add another bathroom or another building or other bedrooms or something like that, then the anticipated impact is there of additional usage. And I, I think that needs to be looked at. And I don't think it's fair to burden the overall citizens, uh, to increase water rates for that. I think if people are looking at trying to do accessory dwelling units, I think they should shoulder the entire cost of that, whatever that happens to be, which in this case, water shares are part of that.
That's a good point, I think, too. The city shouldn't sub, subsidize somebody who wants to build an accessory apartment in their home.
I don't want my water rate to go up so that my neighbor can have a rental property in his backyard and make money off it. I think his rental property should cover the, the entire cost of doing business, whatever that is, so. Whether it's family or whatever, so.
Okay.
And actually with family, it's still covered by their current ordinances. And they can have family in there that are not paying rent, so to speak. That's still a legitimate use of the house.
And in most instances, they won't be creating an accessory dwelling unit. So, yeah. But the water use will increase. Additional people, maybe, maybe equating to what their children were when they started out in the home too, so.
Well, I, I can tell from my experience, because I've had some of my family live with us for long periods of time. And the water bill did not go up that much. Because the biggest part of my water bill is watering my big by far, you know? And so the water bill during the non-watering outside did not appreciably change.
And that's the point Laurie was making with the outside watering comparison stuff.
Okay, I have some, in the notes that you sent us, this accessory dwelling unit, it's ten seventeen one, is that what?
That's what would be our new ordinance.
So I had a question in the very first paragraph of that, it said accessory dwelling unit, um, is permitted use in all residential zones. Do we have any zones that aren't residential?
Yes, we have a physical or a, uh, public facilities, which this city center is non-residential. Our, our, uh, park.
Okay.
Park area is non-residential.
For mitigation.
Oh.
And we have a bunch of agriculture property down on the lower part. It's all non-residential. Someday it will be residential, but it's non-residential now.
Okay, then also on E, it says internal ADUs are only permitted in single-family dwelling lots of six thousand square feet or larger. Six thousand square feet, that's just.
Now, that's something we'd need to change.
Point one, three, eight acres.
Yeah. Because we don't have a zone that small.
Yeah.
Our smallest zone is nineteen thousand square feet.
So we would change that.
We would, we would change that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and then also on F, it says the access to the ADU shall be located within five hundred feet of a fire hydrant. How close does a house have to be?
Our fire chief look at, because right, our, right now, fire hydrants have to be within correctly, Ted, you know, a hundred and fifty, I get confused because we've changed them recently. I think it's two hundred feet to the back of the building. They have to have a fire hydrant within two hundred feet of the back of the building.
And then they space them at four hundred feet on a street.
On the street.
Yeah.
So that's something else we need the fire chief to look at.
Same as the house, yeah.
Whatever our requirements are.
You want that dwelling unit to be within reach of the fire hydrant.
Yeah.
And what they do now, because there are homes that are built farther from the street than that, so they have to put in a a private line and a hydrant down to their house and a way for a, a fire engine to be able to get into it and get in and out. Whether it be a hammerhead or a turner or something like that.
Okay.
And usually that's around eight to ten thousand dollar added cost to them.
Okay.
If that's what they want to do.
Yeah, we've got a few of those in the city that.
So those are a few things that would need to be adjusted and changed on that, on this ordinance. So.
Fire chief has not looked at this yet?
Uh, he's looked at it, but not to that degree.
I'm guessing that's why those are highlighted.
I mean, do you feel that, that the way this is written now is ready for primetime? Or is this something we need to do some more work on?
No, I, I think it's, I, it, it, a little tweaking here and there, but I think it's, it's good.
So another question, maybe just to, to think about this, a little bit unique to our area. So we've got right now, homes in Woodland Hills are required to be sprinkled. I'm guessing the accessory dwelling unit would be.
Yes.
Required to be sprinkled. And because of that, we put in one inch service lines. Now, it says in here that the accessory dwelling unit may be able to use the same service line. Would we want them to increase the size to something like a one and a half from the meter to wherever it splits off to go to their unit?
I don't know. That's something Craig would need to look at and see what.
I think that's what you said on G. It says that if the utility service is not large enough to, to accommodate the ADU, it shall be upsized.
Yeah.
The applicant's expense.
And I, we have one inch service lines going to five thousand, ten thousand square foot homes. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. Whatever they're adding, most of the homes are not that size. Uh, so whatever they're adding, usually they're not enlarging. They may, in a separate dwelling unit, that might potentially be an issue. But within a home itself, they're just modifying some of the rooms, putting a new kitchen, putting in a bedroom in the same structure. So I wouldn't see the need to upsize that one inch line going into the home.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, because what I'm thinking of is if you have an accessory dwelling unit that's a hundred feet away.
It's external.
It's external, a hundred feet away from the, the meter. Like when we did this water project, we put in one and a half inch services to some lots where we knew the homes were going to be that far away, because you just lose too much pressure getting that distance in a one inch line. So we put one and a half inch lines in. So maybe that'd be a few things we just individually have to look at on.
Yeah, sure. Considerations.
Think about, about my house, if I created an accessory dwelling unit downstairs, the only modification I would really have to make is I would have to make a locking sliding glass door in the back, so if I had the rear entrance. Everything else in there, there's a kitchen, there are bathrooms, there are bedrooms that have exterior uh, ways to get out, you know, all of those requirements are already there. And the only thing that I couldn't be is, right now, it's a sliding glass door that you can, you can't go in from the outside unless it's unlocked. So I'd have to change that sliding glass door in the back to have that rear entrance, because it's either, either, the ADU either has to have a rear entrance or a side entrance.
Yeah.
And here's the front entrance.
Right, separate from the main residence.
Right.
Yeah, I could put one in, I could, my basement is the same thing. I just have to build another building to store all the stuff that I have to take out of my basement to put there. So.
Um. I'd lose my shop.
Well, yeah, with a few tweaks, maybe to, to make this more, um, change a few things that are unique to our area. I think it's just reading through it, I think it's, it's pretty close. It's got a lot of good information in it.
I think the one change, I think I would go along with what John had to say. Ie that, that we require the point four, five acre feet of water if you're adding buildings or adding bedrooms to the existing structure. Otherwise, if you're just creating an ADU in an existing house, then we don't require the additional water rights.
So only make that if it's an external ADU.
Or you're adding bedrooms.
Yeah, if, if you divided up your family room and put in five bedrooms there, that's a lot more people.
Right.
So.
I, I have a definition here of what an actual ADU is. And in the definition, it states that it is a single family, it's adding additional, um, granny flats apartments or secondary units, the living quarters on a single-family lot that are independent of the primary unit.
That's contrary to the state, that's contrary to the state law. The state law says it's within the unit. But it also allows for external ADUs as well. But the state definition of it's within the primary residence. So, that's Utah, I, you know, everybody may, others may have their own kind of definition about it, but I understand what you're saying there. That that's different than the state statute. So the water, how, how do you, what you're, that seems to be our biggest, maybe biggest issue, is the, uh, added water.
I would say adding an external unit or adding bedrooms within existing home.
So just throwing out a, and I'm just thinking, I'll throw this in there, say you build an exterior unit, you got two people moving in there. They gotta go get a water right. You have an internal bedroom, you convert to an accessory dwelling unit. It's already there, you have two people moving into it. You're really the same you, water use, but you're going to require one to get a water right, not another. Is that?
Yeah, we just go with that.
This is the state of Utah considering it separate.
Interesting, okay.
So this is, this is for the state of Utah specifically, and it says that it, um, an accessory dwelling unit is a smaller independent residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as a standalone, single-family home.
See, what I'm looking at is, is identifies an internal accessory dwelling unit.
Internal.
Internal.
Yes.
So depends on whether they're utilizing the word internal before that or after.
Yep.
We're trying to cover both in this, right, in this?
Yes.
In this.
Yes.
Oh.
And then also, we could have a house that has an unfinished basement, and then they finish it, so is that counted as adding bedrooms? Or is the house?
That's why I'm thinking, right, I think we're just getting two, we're opening up a can of worms, I think it's just going to be across the board. If we're going to require it for one, we require it for all, make it across the board, if it's an accessory dwelling unit regardless of the circumstance. If not, we're just going to open up so many cans of worms.
Well, Salem's stop it to not require it at all.
Because Lori, if you have an unfinished basement, when you submit the plans with an unfinished basement, there is a projection of what that unfinished basement will look like. And so you have to have the correct kinds of windows, you know?
The size of your septic tank.
You have to have that exterior way to get out of those projected bedrooms.
So what if we just say you need the water right if you are adding an external?
I, I, once again, I don't think it comes down to, I think it comes down to the people you're adding, right? Not the, the water use is based on pop- population, not units, not a house.
And that's going to be almost impossible to
And that's right, and I think that...
Sometimes there may be two people.
Because I could see, I could see one neighbor coming in and saying, hey, um, I'm going to do an accessory building unit and, external, and the city says, I, well, why don't you get a water right? And, well, my neighbor has one in his house and he didn't have to get a water right, why do I? And I just think, I, I worry about, we're creating more issues here that we, you know, things we've already, we're trying to fix in the city now with our code. This will be going back to having, anyway, just my two cents.
I guess with we're being, we're so close, .88 to our, our required now of .90 that, um, you know, we're approaching that maximum projection for water that is allocated, that we're requiring for each household.
What Wayne is, is kind of saying is that each one of those buildings that we have now in the city have had to provide .90 water right. And every new building that's added to the city has to come with a .90 water right. But if we are adding an accessory building on the lot, then maybe it ought to have .45 added. Because you are really adding another dwelling unit on the lot beyond the one that was originally established with the .90 water right.
Yeah, I can see that. I can see that would be a easy way to address it. If it's internal, you don't require any extra. If it's an inter, if it's an external unit, then, then require that. I mean, what we take, the city council's going to take and massage it as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just need to maybe come up with a recommendation, what we, and it doesn't have to be unanimous, you know, uh, either. As far as addressing that particular aspect of it.
That's kind of like a family that has the .90 water right and has one child, and then a family that has the .90 water right and has 10 children. You could argue that that's not fair.
So we're going to do the same in the internal, external, now saying, we're discriminating against one versus the other. I, I think we're just going to create an issue if we don't just, if we're going to require for one, require it for all, and just call it if it's an accessory dwelling unit, regardless, internal, external, if it is defined as that, this is what your requirements are.
Just do it across the board.
Across the board, save all that headache of trying to figure out.
I think...
I think that's perfect, Ted. Problem solved.
I just think you're going to have too many...
Todd, you've changed your mind.
Well, uh...
Because once again, it's based on people, not
Yeah.
unit, right?
True.
Your water use is based on the number of people, whether you're adding an accessory building or it's internal. I don't know if that matters, it's, it's about the people you're adding. That's what the water use is, and that's what's going to require them more water rates. Anyway, that's my thought of.
I mean, I, I think the point I was trying to make with the .45 and the fact that each building now has to have .90 is that we are adding to our .90 with every house that's built. And so moving from .88 up to .90 is not really going to happen as we add houses. It would only happen as we add a dwelling unit on an existing property.
Whether it's internal or external.
We get families moving here. There was one time when it was .45, which the city took for many, many years.
So...
And it's gone from that to .90.
So I'm throwing another wrench into it, and 90 is pretty common statewide for per ERC for water use, for water rates, but, um, so if someone comes in with a house, new house plan, they're building a house with an accessory building, is it now 1.35? Acre feet?
It's not just accessory building.
So if they build a house and an accessory dwelling unit, say, yeah, so they, they're building their primary house, and the same time they're building accessory dwelling unit, I had a brother-in-law do this just recently. Would we require that person to bring 1.35 acre feet to the table, to the city?
Trying to decide.
I vote yes.
Assuming we approve the .45 for an accessory dwelling.
Right, yeah.
What if, if, if they pay or if they, they contribute that water right, is their monthly water assessment still the same, or is it also increased by 50%?
As a standby fee?
Let me correct just a little bit, the analogy that Ted made. The .90 is not being paid by the, the home builder, that's being paid by the developer. So the .45 is the only thing that the homeowner would be paying because somebody has already paid his portion when that lot was subdivided.
And I think the water, what's it called? Water maintenance fee, that's per meter. So if they have one meter, they would just pay the fee once. Some people have two or three meters and they pay two or three of those
The connection fee.
Each month, yeah.
But a vacant lot is just water maintenance fee.
Yeah.
Well, there may be usage on that vacant lot. I'll give you one example. The Wets have an orchard on one of their vacant lots.
But that's separately metered.
Understand.
I think.
So they're paying a separate maintenance fee plus the water usage on that lot.
But that lot is entitled to .90 acre feet.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we allow developers to bring cash in lieu of water rates?
No. No, because the city doesn't want to be faced with having to go out and find a water right. So. Okay, good discussion. Somebody want to make a motion? We go one way or the other with, with things?
Hmm, figure that one out.
I kind of think I know what I want to do.
Now with, with this new ordinance, do we have to have a public hearing on that?
We, we did, tonight.
Oh, my bad.
But we're not the ones that'll make final decisions, city council will, so.
And they'll have another public hearing on it as well.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, you're right, it was number three on the agenda, okay. Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion, we'll see if it's fine. I move that we approve the proposed accessory dwelling unit regulation with the change that instead of .90 acre feet being added for an accessory dwelling unit, that we add .45 acre feet if the accessory dwelling unit is a separate building.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I, I still feel that whether it's separate or whether it's internal, there needs to be some consistency there.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll say a vote, we'll put it to a vote here.
I'll vote with you there, but do, do we want to amend that to say, and other minor changes as necessary? Because there were a couple other changes.
Yeah, with the fire and the size and so on.
So moved.
Okay, make those adjustments. Okay. All in favor of Severin's motion, seconded by Lori?
Aye.
Against that motion?
Against?
Against the 45, .45 acre feet for only an exterior dwelling.
That's correct.
Oh, you're saying you're, oh, I thought you were asking a question.
I'm against the motion.
Okay, okay, I, I, I'm against it as well.
I'll say the same.
Okay.
Mostly because of the external.
Motion did not carry. I'll entertain another motion.
Guess I'm the only one left. Well, Larry, I guess, could. So I would move that we...
There's two ways it can go.
Yeah. That we approve the
Well, yeah, but...
That we approve the ordinance with, as proposed, with minor changes as needed for Woodland Hills, along with requiring a water right of .45 acre feet per unit, whether it be external or internal, or all, I guess.
For any.
For any.
I'll second.
Okay. First and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the, the second proposal carries for a .45 acre, for both, for either internal or external. And we'll see what the city council does with that.
I, I do have a question. A lot of, of extra stuff on these four homes. I mean, that's ridiculous. That's my comment.
Okay.
I, I do have a question.
Yes, right.
What about the current situation with, um, those accessory, those are, 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 that have accessory buildings?
Technically, the city's going to, once this becomes an ordinance, then the city's going to have to monitor that. If they get a complaint that somebody's, has one but has not gotten approved, then the city will have to, uh, take steps to investigate that and potentially fine them or maybe have a grace period um, for them to make the required changes. I don't know, that's something that we'll have to look at, but...
It becomes a matter of code enforcement.
Correct.
Okay. Good to know, thank you.
Very well, let's move on to the next item then. The fencing ordinance. Modification for, and this would only apply to the R119 zone, which right now is only Four Seasons because, uh, Summer Creek has an overlay, so that would not apply. So it'd only be Four Seasons. I've given a copy of this to Robert Nelson, but I haven't gotten any feedback from him yet as to uh, his views and thoughts on it. Um, it, it's fairly simple, again, I think he used, uh, I put, I used Salem's, but then I put a few other requirements in there. Um, let me see if there's any restriction on the type of fence. I don't think that there was.
So you could really build like a chain link fence?
Right, that's what I wanted to see if that was, um... We do, we do allow chain link fencing in the city presently, if it's vinyl coated um, and not slatted so that it, uh...
But even in this case, they could do like a barbed wire fence, right? Because there's, as long as it's six feet high?
Um, yeah. So maybe there's some restrictions that we, we need to put on here for feel the type of fencing.
I'm not saying whether I'm for or against, I'm just, just questioning.
I don't think, to be truthful with you, I don't think we want barbed wire fences down there.
And that'd be my, yeah.
And, uh, and I'd be in favor of, of just a plain, of doing, of not allowing a plain chain link fence.
There has to be a, a certain type of fencing that's going to be allowed. You don't want people putting up like this slap fencing in chain link. That, that's, that's hyper, that's a attracting type, attract type community with no trees, with no barriers. There's got to be some kind of, if they choose to have a wall, but it has to be either vinyl or stone or something that's nice looking for you.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Four Seasons has CCNRs?
Say again?
Does Four Seasons have CCNRs?
They do.
Do they have any fencing requirements in their CCNRs?
We don't care.
Yeah. I'm just curious, if, if we're creating an ordinance, it's going to have something to do with...
We, we care, but we're just not going to do anything about it.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if the CCNRs have something, and if we're creating an ordinance.
Just, just one comment on, on the handout that we got, Wayne.
Yes.
Item number two says, no fence shall be places across the public trail.
Should be placed.
Should there, it says placed.
Mike says places.
Places.
No, I'm sorry, I've got, I guess, an amended copy that does say placed.
Okay.
So, thank you. Um, do we want to put restriction on the kind of fence, on a couple of types of fences that are not allowed? I'm, I'm...
I think so. Is it no bar? No wire strand or barbed wire, wire strand, yeah, I agree, chain link. I, I don't...
Do you want to?
This is me personally, I'm not even a fan, I'm not even a fan of vinyl coated. The vinyl coating chips off.
Okay, gonna add that? Restriction?
Now, a lot of this, again, is coming from the new development, is that correct?
Yes.
Four Seasons.
Yep.
Four Seasons.
Four Seasons. I mean, we've already got in uh in the code. For the question that was asked back here. If we have a sport court, that chain link is allowed around a sport court.
And also the height.
I guess, but it would have to be in your home inside.
Yeah, it's it's not a barrier, it's not a perimeter fence.
We're talking.
Yeah.
You can allow that.
Maybe we need to include the that.
Perimeter.
Perimeter fence in the.
So you have must meet the following standards for perimeter fencing?
Yeah.
A CCNR, everybody in the neighborhood.
That's right. Yep. So. We'd make those changes. Must meet the following standards for perimeter fencing. And restrictions, no barbed wire or wire strand fencing or chain link fencing. Are you comfortable with that, everybody? With these other standards? Okay. I'll take a motion on that.
I'll move that fences for homes constructed in R one dash nineteen zone. Title ten dash eleven dash eight dash C be approved.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Um. Wanted to have a little discussion, further discussion. I think I sent you all a copy of. The last draft that, well, the draft that we used on. Containers. And semi truck trailers as accessory units. Um. I want to talk a little bit, let's. Not, I'm not, I guess I'm not looking to make a decision tonight. But I want to have a little discussion if you've all have had an opportunity to maybe give. Any more thought. Consideration to. To that. Ordinance, proposed ordinance. Um. What you think? Another thought that crossed my mind was. To maybe prohibit them. In a front yard setback. And require them to be. Anyplace other than a front yard setback so that we don't get.
People put them in front of their yard, put them in their front yards.
That's why it is.
Yeah.
Um. I know.
That one doesn't even have lipstick on it. All it has is. It's a little bit of paint.
They are. You can have them as a, yes, as a place to put tools and things like that, but they have to be removed with them. I think fifteen days after having a.
But also when you say semi trailer, you're talking about the ones with the tire and everything still under it?
They have to be removed if they're going to use those.
I can see one sitting on a trailer, no way heck should it be that just look like somebody's parking.
Yeah, right.
The containers to me, yes, they should not be in a front yard setting. And I think no matter where they're put, they should be painted to match the environment. Or decorated in some form. And then it's no different than a regular building. But it's just not, it's just not on a foundation.
Yeah.
If you paint it dark brown or put siding on it or put you put a roof on it to make it look like a building, then it's really no difference.
And that was one of the criteria that we did have. With that.
Yeah, so as long as they decorate it, look like the structure or close to it. And they're not in somebody's space looking like a bright red container sitting out my window. Then I don't see any any reason why not, as long as they don't have twenty of them out there or something like that. You know, but to be approved by your neighbors as well as anything else, but you gotta cover them up. And the reason I know that is that's the industry I just came from, the container world. I've been in the world before. And I see these containers everywhere. They're all over the top. But up here in in this kind of environment. You don't want to be looking at something that ugly out with it. You want to be looking at trees, the natural beauty that came up here for them. So as long as, to me, as long as they're decorated in some form or painted well. To kind of blend in, I don't see a reason why you can't be.
Let me share with you what one of the requirements is. Says any shipping container or semi trailer must be added to to give it the general appearance. Of a stick built or prefabricated structure. Or one resembling the structure on the premise. This may include windows, outside framing and trim. As well as paint and other add on features to cause the structure to lose most of its original appearance. These outside structure modifications must have the approval of the city approval authority regardless of the size. Uh of this type of accessory building structure. So. Thank you for comments. One of the thing that concerned me with this other writing or this other ordinance that we were looking at. Was the uh. Was the issue if somebody moves a container on their lot and then decides not to do anything with it. Had a performance bond. Of five hundred dollars that they would be required to post. To guarantee that they would do what they're supposed to do. Uh the problem then followed with. Um. If they don't do it, say, hey, keep my five hundred dollars. What?
Can we add in there that that we'll use that five hundred dollars to have it hauled off?
Well, yeah. In fact, that's what was part of the thing. It says.
You couldn't get it removed for five hundred dollars.
Yeah, John said it's cost you, gonna cost you more.
So we up it to fifteen hundred and tell them that's the performance bond. I was gonna say, we we use whatever number we need to and just put in there, we'll have it hauled off if it's not done within a year.
Yeah.
Or or have a clause in there that if not, the city will come out and paint it a color or someone.
No, we don't, we're not, we're not in that business.
I'll contract with someone to fix it up and charge the homeowner. If they don't do it.
And and the challenge is even with any of those, and this is just thrown out thoughts, is now you've got more. Responsibility to the city, right? Because now they're gonna have to figure out, okay. Who's how, who has one? How long's it been there? Now I gotta call a company to remove it. Ask me something like Craig or Corbett or whoever, Jody. You're just adding more duties to the city to have to monitor now those. Um. And and maybe that's just something we'll have to deal with, do. I don't know, but just throwing that out.
You know, we're essentially requiring a permit for them to put it in.
Yeah.
And which is part of the problem we've got right now because we've got one huge one in. Who was put in without permit.
Yeah.
If we raise that performance bond to a thousand dollars. To me, that possibly would discourage them from going that route to begin with, which is fine with me, or. If they're serious about it, then they'll put up a thousand dollars.
And a time.
And, yeah, it needs, that's true. We need to.
That's what I was just gonna say. We need to give them a timeframe to be able to.
Yeah.
To make those improvements, like within a.
Probably give them six months.
Within six months or.
Building improvements have a time limit, but.
Year.
The.
A year.
Is it just a year?
But I think to give them six months.
Yeah, I think it should be different.
Yeah, I might would say a year, just in case they move it in in like November, don't get time till.
Yeah.
April. Now you only got maybe a month to hurry and get it all done or something. Maybe give me a year to get it done. That way they have a a good season. Or else it will be removed.
And maybe. Put that, include that in the ordinance, that it bill will be removed so that.
And the.
It has the force of.
Mm hmm.
Mm hmm. To allow the city to take that step.
The city may remove it if not completed or something.
That this performance bond will be used to. To move. The build, the accessory building, if it is not completed with any.
And any.
Because I, I think if it does, we, the city should bill them for the.
They'll use a performance bond plus any additional costs that may be incurred by the city.
I'm just thinking.
I mean, a twenty foot container, a tow truck can back up to it and pick it up and be gone. Forty footers, there's trucks that can pick them up, but they gotta be, if the person had cranes over their house and stuck back in the area where it can't get to, yes, it would be more costly.
Okay, and I'm thinking of like if I had so much junk. That if I could put it all in a shipping container for a thousand dollars and have the city haul it off, would that be weird? Would somebody do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Huh. Now you're giving me some ideas, Lori. Huh. Well, maybe it's, maybe it's a thousand dollars and then any additional expenses incurred by the city will be also. I don't know how you, I mean. You can collect the owner, I guess you could put a lien on their house or something, but I don't know that you could even, I don't know how you'd enforce that additional expense, but. Send them bills, I guess, and shut off their water or something. That tends to get people riled up pretty quickly. I've learned that recently. Go shut off water. They'll respond real fast.
Yeah.
That's what I do tomorrow.
People have to be more serious about bringing them in than they used to be.
Yeah.
What are, what does a twenty or forty foot container cost?
Container, five thousand dollars by one. When they used to be able to get fifteen hundred. So it's become right now, it's really high. I don't know if it'll ever come back down, but they are extremely, I think they're forty footer to close us, fifty seven thousand dollars by one.
How about one of those old Conex containers? The the little ones they used to have?
I don't know what some of those are.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Um. Let me take your thoughts and I'll. Put something together and send it out to you all again to look at and see what you think.
Yeah.
We we can go from there. So. Okay, um. Larry, have you been able to gather some information on this snow removal from sidewalks?
Um I have gathered some information, uh. Uh contacted some of the other cities or entities that are close by. Uh. It it's really hard to get some definitive answers on things like this. Other than that, uh Spanish Fork and Salem and Payson and Elk Ridge. All have information in their ordinances regarding sidewalks. It's part of the same ordinance that. Uh covers city streets. But nothing in those that covers anything about. Responsibility of the city and or the responsibility of the uh resident. To take care of those sidewalks. There is some information, for example, Salt Lake uh. County or Salt Lake City. Has an ordinance that requires property owners. To uh remove snow. From their sidewalks within twenty four hours. However, legally, they cannot enforce that except. They can hire city walkers to clean off the sidewalk if it's not cleaned in twenty four hours. And then bill the the property owner. Uh so it it's kind of a challenge. Uh I'm still getting information. Give me some time to get some some more. And I can submit that to you, Wayne, and we can start put that together.
Okay. Um.
But there, yeah, one other, one other comment regarding sidewalks. Uh both for Spanish Fork and Salem and Payson. The uh city. Usually puts those in and or the developer will put those in. The cities also are responsible to maintain. Those sidewalks. For example, if if you have one that uh folds up or folds down or you get a difference in height. Of more than a certain amount, uh one of the ordinances, I think, said more than a half an inch. Uh then the city is required to fix. That sidewalk. Uh. I did find coincidentally, uh. Farmington, Utah. Their their city goes out every spring and marks all the sidewalks and then the city goes out and repairs those. So they are in charge of maintenance. So the the homeowners are not in charge of maintenance, but they are in charge. Of making sure that they are safe. Uh found some incidences where. A couple of property owners allow an excess of water to flow over their sidewalk and or their street. And if somebody was injured because of that, then it's the responsibility of the property owner. Uh specifically his or ho- uh the homeowner's liability insurance. So there's still a lot of organization and and findings that I need to get on that, Wayne, and and I'll get that and get that out to the the commission.
Okay. I know the sidewalks are on the city right of way, so it's. It stands to reason that the city is responsible for maintaining them and. If there's cracks or problems with that, then that falls to the city to to make the repair.
And I know several cities that have sidewalk re- repair programs. I mean, they. X number of sidewalk a year, they go in certain areas and, like you said, they paint them, they fix them. Now, for homeowner, like you said. When I lived in Saratoga, we were responsible for clearing the snow. That was part of what.
Is that in your ordinance?
I believe so, because I remember the city. Coming out one time and just stating that homeowners are responsible to clear snow on your sidewalks. And you can't cause, if you if you cause something to cause an injury.
Yeah.
And you're liable for that too. Um but the city did maintain them and they had sidewalk, a lot of cities, like I know, you know, I know Spanish Fork and some of those cities that we work with or. They have programs in place.
Yeah, and. Same way with, you know, roads or culverts or whatever.
Because they're in a city right away and they're, they're a public. Um, you know, sidewalk, yeah, so it's.
It is interesting. I did find that the city of Orem. Uh. If if they uh have some areas in their community that do not have sidewalks. And the city decides to go ahead and and put in curb gutter sidewalk. Uh they actually bill the owner for the cost of doing that. Which I found interesting. And they they maintain it, but the owner's responsibility is uh snow removal. And keeping any hazards or anything like that away from the sidewalk.
Uh, maybe you could pursue that a little bit more. That's interesting uh with Orem. Um also, as Ted mentioned, Saratoga.
Right.
Is out there that they may be another source for uh for information too, Larry, so. We'll uh we'll ask you to continue with that endeavor and uh. Um we'll. Put that on the next agenda as well to talk about it and see if you've got any uh new updated information on that.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much for doing that. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Um. The, I think it's the last item we've got, yeah, uh the development agreement. Um with Summit Creek. Um. We've talked to the our our city attorney. And he said generally, the the draft of the agreement that Summit Creek is. Uh is working on and provided to us, he says, it's a, it's a good draft. He says, it's a. Not the verbiage in it necessarily, but the format. How development agreements are 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 done. So. The I was, I just wanted to. Make sure that. What we were doing was wasn't gonna have to be completely reformatted and redone a lot. But um he's, he's working on it also. He has a copy of it and he's been reading through it. Um. The last city council meeting, they assigned Dave Pratt. And Paul MacArthur and myself. To uh kind of get our heads together. As to things that we wanted to have or felt needed to be included. And also to uh uh look at what Summit Creek has provided in a critical way to determine whether. Um. The the city's good with that or needs to be changed or adjusted or whatever. So. Um. I I want to kind of talk a little bit about it tonight, not a long time, but any thoughts that you have. Uh I've prepared a a single sheet of paper here with. Some concerns that I have with what. Uh both comprised of what Summit Creek has done together with. Both comprised of what Summit Creek has done, together with things that I think we should have included in that, in the agreement, so. And this this then. Will be a a document that both the city and Summit Creek will be living by. As they continue their development. In these development agreements, some portions of ordinances can be waived. Also, if there's an agreement on both sides of of the table that something can or should be done that's different than what our ordinance say. Those can be part of the development agreement also, so. Anyway, your your thoughts, if any, if you've got that from your kind of initial review of of this.
I can't find my copy of it right now, but one thing that I remember from the proposed development agreement from Summit Creek. It seemed to me that they were saying on private roads, if they decide that they don't want to have private roads anymore, then the city has to take them over. That's the way I read it, and I, that just does not fly with me, for sure. And there was something else, similar to. I think it may have been the gates on the private road, that those then would become the responsibility of the city as well. And, I mean, it seemed like it was. All Summit Creek had to say is, we don't want it anymore, it's now yours, and I don't think.
So it kind of did say that, it said something about once the roadway has been dedicated to the city, so can they just dedicate any road?
So they, a private road is not dedicated to the city, so that has to happen through a different process, if that time comes. When they want to give up a private road, and I agree with Severin, the city wants to accept it. In reading some other development agreements from other cities. They indicate that that road has to be, if it's in disrepair, has to be brought up to city standards to start with. And then it's up to the city whether they decide to accept that or not, it's it's not automatic. So if that, I'll look at that, if that's in, I agree that that shouldn't.
It seemed to me as I read it, that it was a unilateral decision that Summit Creek can make, and if that's true.
Yeah, certainly don't want that.
Lateral decisions that.
And there were, I think there are other things in there that were kind of unilateral, that this is what we want to do, and so city doesn't have any say.
Yep.
Okay, I have one question on under planned lots, it's two point four. It says in accordance with Utah code, blah blah blah, developer may begin construction of the subdivision improvements on any phase of the project without a performance bond. Prior to recordation, so long as the city has approved construction plans, is that normal that they can start without a bond?
Yeah, that's normal. If 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 it's not recorded yet, they can do it at their own expense, but to record it, then that's, they've got to post the bond plus the ten percent usually.
But they can't, they can't start working on that.
If if they if they get a final plot approval but don't record it, and they want to start construction costs, most cities will let them do that. Without posting a bond, and then they have to bond for everything that's not done, plus the ten percent at the time of recording.
They have to have a durability. Factor in there at that time, too, for inspection. And and.
Yeah.
But, so, yeah, okay, but.
Wayne, I read that, I didn't like it one bit, how's that? Seems very one sided, and let me ask you a question, has a city done development agreements in the past with anybody?
Yes, there was one that was done with Thousand Oaks.
Okay, I would strongly urge with every bone in my body. That as this gets worked, because if I remember right, in a meeting here a week or two ago, they're really pushing to get this done quickly with the city cover. You guys need your city attorney to tear this apart, look at it, and make sure all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed, because us as normal folks are not going to see the weak spots. I I saw several, so many that I don't even want to list them, but I think your legal counsel needs to tear this apart. And make sure you guys are covered before anybody agrees to it, or you guys are going to get stung.
I agree, and he's looking at it now. So he has it, is looking at it.
Yeah, there were enough things in there to cause me concern, and 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 I don't think they're trying to pull anything over on you, but they were just very matter of fact in it that once this is approved. That we have permission to do A to Z without having to come back to the city for anything.
Yeah, and that concerned me as well. Like some kind of initial approval, and then they could just go ahead and.
And do whatever they want, whenever they want, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Kay, I also, it also said reimbursement is due to the developer for the portion of Summit Creek Drive, was that agreed upon before?
No.
That's kind of concerning.
For the work that was done, not the road itself or property, but the work that was done, but I, my understanding is that has been all worked out. Our engineers put figures together and calculations to determine what each party was supposed to pay the other. And that include Robert Nelson, included the city, included, I think even the church, as well as Summit Creek. That's not the road?
No, that was for the water, I had to put in there.
Okay.
Well, it says here, the developer has constructed at its at its expense the road currently known as Summit Creek Drive. And then they want the city to reimburse the developer for the portion of Summit Creek Drive that is designed to provide services within the community at large, rather than to the residents of Summit Creek. Developer and city will enter into a reimbursement agreement.
And that's a normal, that's a normal thing to do.
If we agree. I mean, if we were, were we planning on that?
I think there was an agreement specifically for that road.
When I've seen that in the past, and I don't know how the city does it, but in development, you've seen that pass, usually what happens is the city's collecting an impact fee. And they use a portion of that impact fee to reimburse the developer for any public improvements the developer has constructed, but I don't know that we're collecting any impact fees for roads.
I know there was some kind of agreement that.
So, and that's because, I actually had to do an extensive review on one of these for an attorney one time, to give an engineer's opinion, and. And that's essentially what that community is doing, hideout community by Jordan Hill. As they're collecting impact fees, developer come in and build these public improvements. And as future development happened that benefited from those improvements, the city was collecting those impact fees, so they would have to reimburse the developer that built them. From the other developers that were benefiting from them, and in this case, I don't know that we have that circumstance.
So we do have, like, the water tank, is a good example, we have an impact fee for the water.
Right.
Because that's something that got built by the developer, benefits the whole city and benefits, and it was built primarily for new develop. New people built out, they have to pay for the water.
The developer, yeah, yeah.
But the Summit Creek Drive one, I like that as well.
Yeah, I would, I'd be careful with that one.
What part is that, what number is that, Lori?
Which is probably wise.
I have a lot of it, it was four point three, four point three.
Four point three?
It's a little one sided.
Oh, no, that was four point one, about the reimbursement.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's one other thing here, it's two point six. It says that the developer can make changes to the plans and specifications, drawings for a phase, you know, that the the city has already approved. And then it says. So long as the changes are consistent with this agreement, you know, laws, et cetera, the city engineer shall approve such changes. It's like, shall, yeah, it's like, hmm. Takes out any decision, just they shall approve it.
Yeah, but I think. This is theirs, and now we present ours.
What they're doing by by making it so one sided, is they're making me, I think that's how I feel, I want, I don't like, okay, fine.
You're here, you're here.
They're going to play the game, I'm going to be, I'm going to nitpick the crap out of it. Because you're being so one sided, it doesn't have the spirit of partnership. Fine, so I'm gonna, I would give that offer to Ben, Ben. We just want to do a C over here, and you guys go and you write a document that has the spirit of partnership in it. And then maybe we won't be so picky, but if you want to play the game this way, we're going to spend eight months on this document, and it's going to be locked in. And you're going to hate me at the end.
I I also feel that in some ways they might be kind of protecting themselves, because I think that, and this is my opinion, but I think that the city had approved some plans and then we went back and, and I can't remember what it was. But the city approved something and then we went back and we're kind of arguing over things and wanting them to change it when we had approved it. So I can see how, no, it wasn't the gates, I think it was parking, parking spaces, I can't remember what it was. But I felt like they, they were kind of, I felt bad for them, and so I can see how they might be wanting to protect themselves, so.
And if that's the case, we can play the game that way, but they gotta know we're going to want to protect ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not a fun way to play the game.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, again, I want to be a partner with that, they've been a good partner.
They have, yeah.
I want to be a good partner, and I just, when I read that document, I was like, really?
Yep. Well, that. It may be worth pursuing that way, Dave, and see, see where where it takes us with them.
You know, I think it would be good if you sat down with your underlying parts and in a spirit of cooperation. See if they will rephrase those, rather than, you know, having to go to all the work of completely redoing everything.
The entire document has the wrong spirit about it.
Like shall, instead of may or.
It's the wrong way to approach a document. So. I would just prefer that they take a look at it and go, yeah, that's not really how we want it to be. But, you know, like throwing that whole gate thing in there, that was. I mean, after all, we've been through this whole gate, throw that paragraph in there.
And and hear about gates? About the gates on the private roads or what gates?
There's nothing in those private roads. Because we can put gates wherever we want.
Really, I didn't read that. Oh, I have another question here.
Sure.
It says, under land conveyances, the city agrees that developer has established open space sufficient to fully satisfy developers' open space obligations under city law. What are the open space obligations?
Usually it's for city to maintain it. If it's in the, if it's dedicated to the city.
That they have to have a certain percentage of open space, in exchange for the fact that we allow them higher density.
Okay, so I was wondering, is that like the one house per acre average or something? Basically, okay.
But the thing that bothers me about that is, they go and prove that. They're they're basically shit passing us, finding out things. Especially because they don't even have some of the other lots plowed, there's no way of saying, yes, you're done.
And they may replat.
And they may replat, and then that would break the ratio, and now they're not. So it.
Yep. So there needs to be more of a mutual, like, it's been said, a more of a mutual understanding about a lot of that. It's included, not that it's bad, but there needs to be more of a. Give and take and an understanding and working together on some of those things and is portrayed in the.
And it's Dave said, more of a cooperative.
Yeah.
Spirit.
Yeah.
Oh, I see the gates part now. That's on four point four. Under roadways. Well.
Well, I am interested in all of your, if if you've got any kind of a word document or whatever, just a little bit of narrative or or points to to send them to me.
I think there's.
I have a question, Wayne.
For to start.
Yeah, yes.
What's the situation with a a road or access to the property that they own up by the water tanks?
Yeah, that's a good question, we've been talking about it. They want access to it up there through city property and even through a piece of private property, but.
Right.
That's, that's an issue.
I mean, yes, they do own that property, but there are a couple of of private properties there. That they could purchase to develop their own access to their property.
Yep, yep.
Just just my two cents worth.
No, you're right, that's. Again, it's kind of an indication of the one sided aspect of the.
Well, and the access that they want. One, of course, is is towards the north. Which is already a very small width access, or the small access up there. Just off of Eagle Nest or that other little roadway there where the switchback trails access is. I I don't see either one of those as as being feasible access to their property.
Yeah, it wouldn't suit that for development up there.
So they're building houses above the Machado House?
Possibly, they have property up there.
Okay.
Yeah, they do have, I think, sixteen or eighteen acres. Something like that.
Yeah. Yep. So, anyway, let me, give me your, just maybe send me an email with attachment with the comments on what you've seen from that, and I think it will bolster. Our position as we go back to them and talk to them further about it.
Have you talked to to Dave and Paul about this, Wayne, and what their feelings are?
Other than to know that they're the same as mine, pretty much.
Okay.
Haven't talked in detail, but we're all of the same mind that it's a very one sided proposal and. A lot of things in there that the the city would be foolish to agree to.
Right, sounds good.
Looking at their plans, though, I think the the map, it looked beautiful, and I really liked the end result. Um, that they showed.
Oh, yes.
That colored.
Proposed, what they're looking at there, yeah. And we're kind of working on. And we're kind of working on that. That's, that's been revised probably 10 times.
I might get a gate.
I like the monuments, the pictures.
Yeah.
Tennis courts.
Yeah, I don't know how they would ever sell that street.
It'll be nice.
City would want to sell it.
No, they have a lot of good, good thoughts that way.
Yeah. I underline that.
So there's no way you can finish all the roads in six months. There's just no way.
Look at the summer.
You can't even get a contractor hardly to get there within six months.
Yeah.
There's just no way.
Okay. Any, anything that any of you have to, any miscellaneous that anybody has to bring up at all?
No.
I'll just note that the information that we're providing citizens, the, the two bulletins, one came out on transparency about some things are happening. And the other one, I can't remember the name of it now, but I was pretty impressed with it. It compared it to Oreo cookies. I don't know if you all saw that.
Oh, yeah.
City newsletter, yeah.
City newsletter that came out. I was just very impressed with that information and, and hope that our citizens are looking at that and grateful to the people that are volunteering their time and effort to produce things like that for the city.
Uh, there's been a lot of good comments that's been reported on, Larry, of those, that, that information and getting that information out. Another one was on the, uh, this voting, the new voting process. I think we're still trying to figure that out, but anyway, the information's there. So it is. The city's making a lot of effort to try to be as transparent as they can. As usual, there's, there's a lot of people who want to be spoon fed. And, you know, it goes both ways. If the information is there, then somebody needs to take advantage and, and, and pursue it. If it's not, then, then that's on the city. But if it's out there, then people need to, and they can find out easily where it's at. Look at it, read it, and understand it, and be better informed than, than maybe they have been. So
Well, I have, I have 24 grandchildren. If somebody wants to buy the food, I'll gladly spoon feed them.
I thought you were going to say somebody wants to buy one of them. They're available for sale.
Uh, no, I wouldn't sell them at any price. Their parents might.
Very good. Take a motion?
I motion to adjourn.
I was waiting for Severn's motion. Second. I could see him wanting to make it over there for a while.
Very good.
Thank you for
Take one and all.
Your time. And it was really great to sit here and watch the collaboration discussion and